Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Anglerwood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is March 5th, 2019. This is a special meeting with special people. We call the meeting to order at 7:00 P.M.
May I take a roll call?
Please have a roll call.
Mayor Kranjak?
Here.
Councilperson Wu. Song.
Here.
Sabari.
Here.
Park.
Mr. Yelich.
Aversa.
Here.
O.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Yo.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's here, Mayor, except Councilperson Wu and Park, and I was not informed by them if they were going to attend the meeting or not.
Okay, I believe that Borough Attorney's answer of "yo" is equivalent to "here" or "present" for most people. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute as we start all our meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and as you would recall, it truly stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the Municipal Clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by Municipal Clerk.
Okay, thank you. A couple of housekeeping matters. When we open to the public, I'd like to hear, in particular, people speak to the issues that we have currently in town: affordable housing. Also, just so everybody knows, I received a letter from Officer in Charge of Internal Affairs regarding two investigations of other officers. Those charges were dismissed, but I was not interviewed, and I wonder if anyone else here was, because that might be relevant to what we do next. Also, Mr. Wunsch, I had asked you, and I'll ask you again, who drafted the January 24th resolutions regarding Chief Chaffee and the others?
I don't remember.
So they just magically appeared?
It could be magically delicious, but I don't understand.
Well, that's Lucky Charms, but you're actually an attorney, so I'm asking you a legal question.
I have to see it in front of me, so I can't say anything without having it in front of me.
So you're having a lapse of memory?
Not at all. I asked you to put it in front of me.
So these were the resolutions regarding the dismissal of charges. Does that ring a bell?
No.
Well, you had so much to say to the press about it. Why don't you speak now?
Well, so did you.
Okay, so you don't remember?
Can we continue our moral business, please, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Mayor, for the record, Councilperson Wu and Park arrived at 7:00 P.M.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Okay, so have a motion to open to the public, please.
Okay.
Hold on, favor.
All right.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you. Come up to the microphone here, state your name and address, and whatever you wish to say. Ms. Eastwood.
Oh, come on, man. You want to be a child. For the record, Mayor's a child.
There'll be no calling out from the audience.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. I have several things. First, I spent a few hours going through ELEC filings to determine who's been giving money. And over the four years, I found that Boswell Engineering has given the Democratic Council candidates $5,200. Carter Karsten has given them $6,000. Davis Saberstein and Solomon has given them $1,500. Faroli, Wilcox, Sulu, and Seba has given them $4,300. And Marinello and Marinello has given them $1,000. And I think we can all see now why the Democrats didn't want to pay the play ordinance, because many of the people they've appointed in years gone by have made substantial contributions to them. Speaking of internal affairs investigations, at a previous council meeting, we had charges dismissed because there had to be an internal affairs investigation first, and I'd like to know what the status of that investigation is. Because as someone who operated the tapes and has listened to some of the tapes and is working their way through them, the tapes are very disturbing.
Well, you clearly don't understand the way Anglerwood Cliffs government and bureaucracy works. People do bad things, and then it gets forgotten by the Democratic majority and gets erased. That's how things work here. And to make--
This is going to be--
Well, to make matters--
I agree with that.
To make matters worse, then you have a prosecutor who doesn't do anything, and Attorney General who'd rather just spend his time suing Donald Trump rather than actually fixing New Jersey.
I also see there is a resolution on dismissing charges against the Borough Clerk. I operated the charges against the Borough Clerk, and the OAL provided them to me. They are very serious. I know from firsthand experience that this is not the first time that there has been an issue with the accuracy of minutes, because I know that I was completely misquoted in a prior set of minutes, even though there was an audio recording of what was said. I also am aware of issues with Oprahs. For a number of months, the Borough was putting all of the Oprah requests for the month online. I had Oprah'd a letter from Kane Kim to the Mayor and Council, and I had received a copy of it with the name of the police officer redacted. Now, I have a real issue with it, but I understand that that is what the law requires. I find the practice of protecting wrongdoers and alleged wrongdoers who are on the government payroll to be very disturbing. However, when the entire month was put up, the letter wasn't redacted. And so I was able to learn that the person that Kane Kim was writing about was Lieutenant And while I think that name should be public, the fact that it wasn't redacted undoubtedly will create problems for the Borough, because the rules on personnel require that it be redacted, because New Jersey protects employees at the interest of transparency. And I think you need to think long and hard about whitewashing these charges. It's a serious matter. I have them. I will be happy to make them available to anybody who wants them. You guys all have them, because I emailed them to you, and none of them bounced. And I think you need to start working for the Borough and stop working for the Democratic Party.
Well, that's a cry in the darkness. I don't know if that's ever going to happen here. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Andrew Nikow, 54 Elm Street. I will talk about one of the topics the Mayor brought up regarding our litigation, and one of the things I'm sure, as you're all aware of, last week, the judge ruled on the Normandy application before the Planning Board and their appeal. And as the judge, and I read the judge's response, it was quite damning against the Planning Board. And, you know, to talk about where we are with affordable housing, and I'll reiterate what I did in the last meeting, is that we're here for one reason, and that is the poor decisions by the Planning Board led by Mr. Perino. I'm glad he's here. Maybe he can rebut them. But as the judge found, ruled in her decision last week, it was very damning against the Planning Board. And this is going to be the second time that a judge has overruled the Planning Board for being arbitrary and capricious. And I think that that's a problem, especially that this Mayor and Council needs to address. If our Planning Board, and I was a member of the Planning Board in prior years, if our Planning Board is being rejected by the courts this way, we have a major problem. And I think one of two things need to happen. Number one, this Council needs to send a letter of no confidence or a motion of no confidence in the Planning Board. Number two, and me personally, I think they should all resign because of their failure to the Borough of Anglerwood Cliffs. And number three, this Board needs to establish a zoning board of adjustment to take the power away from that Planning Board who clearly cannot do their job. That Board put us in a very bad position with affordable housing because of their poor decisions with Normandy, and that's something that this Borough is going to live with for a very long time that cannot be undone. The damage will be severe to this community, and I think everybody agrees on that. Thank you.
So I just want to state publicly my unwavering support for Chairman Perino and for the Planning Board. They've done a fantastic job throughout. They've made the right decisions. They've made the right decisions, and I have all the confidence in the world in them. And I'm also very grateful that I live in a state that has appellate courts, and I'm hoping that the Planning Board will appeal that decision so that the Planning Board is vindicated. And also, the third point, because this must be something that people love to do on a certain side of the political spectrum, is create more bureaucracy. The last thing we need is another Board. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
New microphone. Russell Perino, 220 February Avenue. I came here tonight, actually, to mention something else that I think is a community-wide, actually, it's a county-wide and statewide initiative, something called the Northern Valley Greenway. I'm not sure if anyone's heard of it yet. It's the plan to convert the unused rail line, starting from Tannafly up to Rockland County, up to the county line, basically, to convert it from train to paved surface, walking, biking, et cetera. And I just came from there now. And, Mayor, if I may, I'll leave these. Maybe you could hand them out to the Council. They need support of not just the local citizens that are currently working on that, but they need governmental support as well, too. The towns that this line runs through already have supported it by resolution, and I suggest that the Borough get involved as well, too, just to show it the support and spread the awareness, because most people hadn't even heard of it. I hadn't been told a few days ago, so I think it's really worthwhile, of course.
So these are unused railroad tracks?
That's right. It's the rail line that runs actually, you know, continues down south of Anglerwood and south of there, but that's probably going to be light rail one day, but the terminus is expected to be in Anglerwood for the light rail. So everything north of that is going to be, in the future, not to be utilized, so they figure it's good time to now try to convert it. So that's one item. Talking about the Planning Board, there's individuals that like to get up here and speak as if they have the knowledge, experience, that they think they have, but they don't. It's easy to get up here and to get up and make judgments and make statements as if they're facts, okay? The person who came up before me did not attend one meeting. He didn't come to these meetings for probably a year and a half, governing body or Planning Board. So to march in here and to state as a fact is wrong, okay? There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. You can have your opinions. Ms. Sabari voiced her opinion a year and change ago at a Planning Board meeting, and she spoke respectfully, and she said she disagreed with the Planning Board's decision, and I thank her for that. She didn't march up and say, "I know what you did was this or that," and blame the entire issue that the Borough faces today on me and on the Planning Board. It's folly. It's folly. They do not know that we wouldn't be sitting in the exact same place now regardless of the Planning Board's decision. That's a fact. And I look forward to the day when I can speak fully about the knowledge that I have that they don't have. I can't speak to it now, but I will at some point when Council lets me. So everyone who's getting up here and saying what they're saying, be ready, because one day you'll be proved to be wrong, to be liars, and to be using this for the political benefit that you plan to use it for. It's quite obvious why it's being brought up with the veracity that it is. And each Board member volunteers their time and should not have folks that get up to know the first thing about this, that drank the Kool-Aid that someone else gave them, and convince them that this is what happened. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so just to remind the public that what we heard from Mr. Perino were facts, not feelings. What we heard from Mr. Nikow were feelings, not facts. And as we all know, a Planning Board has to make decisions based on facts, not feelings. You know why? Because facts have no feelings, Mr. Nikow. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. You know, I wanted to respond to Mr. Nikow's comments. I'd like to know why this Board decided to drop the lawsuit with Normandy. And you know, the residents of this town need to ask themselves the question: Who benefits from these housing things going up? Obviously, the politicians who are being supported, the bank owners, the insurance businesses, the attorneys. I mean, I've been living here too long--
You forgot real estate agents.
Yeah, real estate agents, absolutely. And I want to remind Mr. Nikow of something. It was Joe Perici Jr. and his regime that did away with the Board of Adjustments, because they didn't play into his plan as to what he wanted at the time. So to say that we need another Board to oversee-- We did have another Board, but it was the Perici people that did away with it. I wanted to make a comment about what Ms. Favaro said when she came up the last meeting about our Shake Tree Committee and all that. And it was really a wonderful speech she made, but I wanted to make a point about what she said. She never once came over to us. She loves this town so much, she loves the trees so much, she loved the Shake Tree. Yet she never once came to us and said, "Let me help you. The computer's down, we can't get our stuff, there's no paperwork." She never once came to a meeting and said, "Let me help keep Anglerwood Cliffs in the same way that I did it for 30 years." And on one, she came to one meeting, this whole time, she came to one meeting, and we were talking about this grant that we had to file for, and I said to her, "Mrs. Favaro, maybe you would like to help us?" And she said, "If you give me $8,000, I will." So I wonder, really, and it's the truth, don't make that face, really. So what was important for Mrs. Favaro and for the rest of you Democrats up there? What's really driving all your people? To me, it's obvious, after living here for 30 years.
Honestly--
Excuse me, I'm talking, I am talking--
You are not--
I am talking--
Please, please, do not--
Do not--
Do not tie with the--
I'm sorry.
Do not tie with the--
No, I'm not going to allow you--
No, you're out of order.
--to sit there--
Councilwoman--
--and call me--
Councilwoman Sabari, you're out of order.
--for what's happening.
You're out of order.
Okay?
You're out of order, you have to stop.
It's not all right.
You have to stop.
No, I'm making it very clear, there's no corruption on our side.
Oh, and as it's been evident by what you guys have done--
It is not--
Excuse me, I don't want to have an argument. I'm here--
We're done, we're done being abused by you. Excuse me?
Please, you're out of order. You do not have the floor.
We are done being abused--
We follow office rules, you're out of order.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're out of order.
Pick up when you want to.
I'm the chair of the meeting.
Yes, you're just being political.
Ms. Valari.
Okay, okay. I see that you're going to be making a decision as to the allegations against Ms. Duffy. No surprise here, again, Mr. Song, no surprise, just look at what you're all doing. I can't believe that you are going to be dismissing charges, and that's what it looks like you're doing tonight, against someone who actually colluded with the Chief of Police and had to mess up the Republicans. What is wrong with you people? Ms. O. Ms. Park, if you could just stop laughing for a moment, maybe you would listen to what people are saying up here. Mr. Wunsch, really, we're, I'm just saying, we're residents here, and we see what's going on. How about you do something right for once? You're only here, what, since January something, and you have cleaned the slate. You've cleaned the slate against everybody, and it's wrong. It's wrong. I'm sorry. This woman is the one who runs our elections. I don't know that Ms. Duffy could be impartial when it comes to Democrat-Republican elections. I also want to know, what is going on with the other lawsuits that are out there about, on the tapes, against all the other officers? Has everything been dropped? I know the Chaffee thing has been resolved. I think, I don't know, whatever's pending out there, I'd like to know what's going on with those lawsuits, or have they all been dropped, or are you going to be dropping them?
Mayor Kranjak's got a lawsuit against us, and a, another, he amended that lawsuit.
Yeah, I think she referred to the corruption lawsuits.
Eastwood has a lawsuit, and then she amended that one against us. There's also a request to intervene in the Tracy matter done by Ms. Eastwood. There is an Oprah lawsuit by Ms. McMorro, so those are the ones that have just been filed since--
I understand, but being a resident, I know what's going on up there. I'm sorry, Mr. Wunsch--
No, I think--
--the reason why the lawsuits are happening--
The ones that are in the Chaffee recording--
You, you--
Well, the only, the only thing that's pending, as I understand it, is what should be pending, which is IAs, which are secret and not part of this tribunal.
Well, to the public, I am, I am one person here who believes that everything should be transparent, and no one should be able to be--
The Attorney General guidelines say otherwise, so stop it.
So, so, so what we have--
This is our, this is our--
So what we have is IAs that are out there, and we're not privy to them. And I know what's happened in the past with IAs, that things have been lost and things have been dropped. That's why we have so many lawsuits, Mr. Wunsch, and everybody else sitting up there. You need to look at the whole picture. Don't just point out Ms. Eastwood and all that. Point out the rest, Mr. Wunsch.
About the pending lawsuits, I'm just telling you what you asked.
You missed a lot of them.
I was talking about the tapes and the police, Mr. Wunsch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Yes. Well, is that Councilman Verso? I didn't hear you.
What happened?
I didn't hear what you said.
I see.
He sees your tie. He sees your tie looks really nice.
And there's plenty of cupcakes around, so you don't-- Make sure there's plenty, and it's all in there, too, so don't worry.
All right, then I'm going to jump on. Hey, go steal them. I'll try to be patient. Is that, you have the pilot, right?
Yeah.
So just for the public's edification, we have a new rule since January 3rd in here, a couple weeks later. The Democratic Council has instituted a five-minute rule for all public speakers, so you're limited to five minutes. The first couple of meetings, Councilman Verso was in charge at the time, he needed a very good job. He enjoyed his job, and now he's handed it over to the Borough Clerk, who's keeping time. For the record, the three years prior to the Democratic Council majority, I did not limit people's time, because I viewed that free speech--
That's not true.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Free speech, free speech is free speech.
Look at the videos.
And I tended to never try to limit time at all, okay? But I think it's important to-- I think if people became redundant and started repeating themselves--
You think it's redundant every week, same people?
Oh, you don't like hearing from the citizens? You don't like that, Gloria?
Well, you know what, it's the same residents on your side of the, you know, party.
All right. I think the residents should have the right to speak.
So do I. Let them speak.
Karen McFarrow, 49 Summit Street. And for the record, Ms. Sabari, I did look at the videos. You averaged seven and a half minutes every time you got up to speak, for the record.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
That is not--
If I'm, Mayor, I'm going to start--
If you're going to address me, I'm going to answer you. So don't address me.
I'm going to start it over every time. I will not--
Councilwoman Sabari, you're out of order, please.
I'm not going to be interrupted. Okay, okay. I'm going to touch on a couple of things. I have been watching the agenda, and I'm quite disappointed that the agenda only added the disciplinary charges against the Clerk very late today. And if she advertised it two days ago, why is she playing with the agenda and not letting the public know what's supposed to be on that agenda, okay? She should have had that up two days ago, and she should have represented it properly. Clearly, she was hiding from the public the fact that she had her own resolution and is dismissing her own charges. That's number one. Number two, I'd like to, I was not interviewed on any of these items, on the charges that she's being dismissed for. And I do have firsthand knowledge, and I stated something to that effect at some of these meetings, I'm not going to state which ones they were. Mr. Ruderman, or whoever the Labor Council is, or yourself, Mr. Wunsch, whoever came up with this idea to dismiss these charges, because clearly you violated the Open Public Meetings Act, because you haven't met as a group to discuss, to write that resolution to dismiss her charges. So when did you do that? I mean, there's so many violations, and you're talking about people filing lawsuits. When you break the lawsuit, sir, they're going to file lawsuits. That's why we have rules. That's why we have a police officer standing here, and we have a police department, so to address people that break the rules and the laws, okay? And laws apply to all of you as well, all of you, each and every one of you. So as for Tape 78, which you, Mr. Wunsch, are misrepresenting to the judge what is on 78, and I look forward to the day when Judge Farrington gets to hear Tape 78, and along with the other misrepresentations that you made to the court about the tapes that you're hiding from the public, to find out what's on there. What Ms. Duffy did on Tape 78 is outrageous. My opinion, she should be fired on the spot, but I understand with the statutory position that it has to go to a different department. She should have been suspended, but you rewarded her by putting her as an acting administrator. She colluded with the Chief of Police, yourself, Ms. O., and Aversa in making lies up about me, because Tape 78 is an outright lie, okay? The discussion that I had with John Lanza was about Moro Road, and if somebody had the decency to turn around and pick a phone, put a phone up and ask me, you'd know. But no, you got to make up this story so that everybody could put it in their lawsuits and then sue the town and cost them money, and then you can advertise that there's lawsuits. Shame on each and every one of you. How could you dismiss the charges against her, knowing what she did? Okay? And I'm going to play this for you right now.
Yes, how do you know? Yeah, I'm trying not to throw any pictures. The first one, that'll take all of you and throw anyone else. Well, you know what? She's just, she's, she gets scared. Judge tells us something, and I said to her--
Al, watch, made it very, very clear to me. There's a reason they don't want her in Brenzis. The reason we took her, because Al was kicked out of the meeting, because Al said to me, "Why'd you guys vote for her?" And I'm like, "I didn't know there was a problem."
Why was he kicked out?
Because Brenzis from the court said-- You know Brenzis? From, she's on there. She, Brenzis, said, "I don't know who you are." "Who are you?" And he goes, "I'm Al Wunsch, I'm a resident, because you're not a resident." He goes, "But I'm also the public defender." "Oh, you can't be here in the interview, get out." So he only got as far as two, a blue-black guy that we interviewed and another woman. So those two. He goes, "But why? I'm a resident, you need a resident here. Get out, you can't be here." So the three, Judge, myself, and Brenzis, then came to me. Then came Tony, the third applicant, and I fell in love with her, because she's so anal and organized, if, outside, if I would not have been in the meeting, I would have said, "Don't go for her, we don't want her." This man's got her, her reason, and he told me, "Brenzis."
"We don't want her." I was at the reorg when you, and the whole council, made motions to try and fire Tony Secone, and you all swore that was for something else. You're on tape, saying you don't like her, she's on tape, saying she's the first one to throw her under the bus. Clearly, there's animosity against Tony Secone. Shame on you, shame on all of you. Last, I put an Oprah request in, I, I put an Oprah request in on January, uh, 16th. I got the response here. This is what was given to me, by the borough clerk. Thirty-one people's social security numbers, and 323 tax IDs. I think you would like to hear this, because you're gonna need to address this issue. Thirty-one social security numbers.
Thank you.
Mr. Aversa, I am bringing to your attention...
This is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirty-one social security numbers were given out in an Oprah request, and 323 tax ID numbers. The borough has given out, at the least, you need to immediately notify the individuals, which include retired police officers, on-duty police officers, members of our fire department, and other individuals, and let them know that their social security number and tax ID number has been given out in response to an Oprah request, and maybe other Oprah requests as well. You need to notify the public that that happened, because guess what? Because of the actions of the borough clerk, you now have liability.
Can I take care of that, please?
Liability, again, okay?
Thank you.
I hope you don't vote to dismiss those charges, okay? Because what she did is outrageous, and you're all...
So, for, um, for the substantive issue of social security numbers, Ms. Duffy, can you please look into that, and, and, and protect...
Yeah, we've given out, Mayor.
Protect the privacy of everyone whose social security number went out.
Let her go.
And I, I think I should mention for the public, I, I do not approve this agenda, and I did not approve it. Uh, I'm not even sure who put it together, I guess it's Gloria, it looks like it's got her trademark on it. Uh, the, um, the, and I, as, I don't approve the agenda, I also don't approve the dismissal of those charges, and, and what's interesting is, I spent, uh, the better part of this week trying to get from Mr. Wunsch a report that Labor Council provided to him, and didn't provide to me, or to Councilman Wu. I, I got it right before the meeting from Council...
You're a liar.
Well, okay, well, you know what, you can say whatever you want, but the fact of the matter is that I asked you for...
Liar, liar.
Officer, please.
Pants on fire.
All right. So, this, this is actually, this is actually our attorney behaving that way, okay? And, and it gets worse, because here's what happens, right? So, uh, Labor attorney Ruderman writes a report, I finally got it two minutes before the meeting from, uh, Mr. Wunsch, I asked him to email it to me, write email, we live in 2019, just send me it by email, it's like three pages long apparently, I just got it. So, Ruderman himself is on the Chaffey tapes, speaking against the interest of the borough, okay? And he's the guy who's creating a report regarding the clerk, and dismissing charges against the clerk. So, you, you see, welcome to Englewood Cliff, where, where every log is rolled together, unless you're a Republican, because then you get thrown off the log, okay?
You have a point, what are we gonna say?
So, here's the thing, here's the thing, Ruderman should have recused himself, and I told him that, I told him, "You should recuse yourself, because you're on the tape with Chaffey, speaking against the interest of the borough..."
When did you tell him?
"...regarding a litigation that Chaffey was involving, before you became councilperson, back in, um, August or July." So, so here's, um, here's the thing, so, and I, I think also, there's probably an Open Public Meetings Act violation, because somehow, all of a sudden, these things start appearing on the agenda right before the meeting, okay? And everything's drafted and written, and, um, if I ask Mr. Wunsch, "Who drafted these resolutions?", "Who drafted these resolutions?", "Did you do them?", "You did?"
Yeah.
Okay, what about the January 24th resolutions? No idea?
Show it to me.
No idea, okay. Um, all right, is there anyone else? Is there anybody else from the public?
Come on, Mayor.
I don't have them with me. Is there any, you wanna pull them up?
Second?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a resident with her hand up, okay? Please. Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street, few points. One, the pay-to-play laws. The pay-to-play laws were enacted by the state, you seem to lose sight of why they were enacted. They were enacted so that people weren't rewarded for giving contributions without public bidding, weren't awarded contracts, based to get, because they gave contributions, without either public bidding taking place, or an RFQ process taking place. If you have public bidding, or you have an RFQ process, then it is permitted to give contributions, and that is not against state law. So, let's understand exactly what that law is all about, and why it came into being, and not why it's, how it's being misconstrued by several residents. Number two, as far as the, uh, ability of the public to speak, I've been going to council meetings for five years, easily, and certainly, in the last three, since you've been mayor, I have been cut off multiple times from speaking.
I know, only when you became redundant.
Excuse me, I, excuse me, there you go again.
What? You're being redundant.
Yes, redundant, serious. Number two, so let's not create a new, um, description of what happened in the past, and try and color-code it into something it wasn't. Number three, um, as a resident, it's very interesting and disturbing to me that you, Mr. Mayor, have no problem interrupting any resident who's speaking, who you disagree with, or who wants to maintain a dialogue that is not in your interest, and yet you cut off councilpersons who wish to do the same thing. That doesn't serve the purpose of government. Each of the councilpersons is elected just as you are, and I want to hear what they have to say, especially when they are disrespected by residents. Number four, uh, as far as tape number 78, I did hear tape number 78, and I also received several copies of doctored Oprah requests related to Lanza and Lanza.
Tape 78, that's not, it's confidential.
Tape 78, I believe, is the one on Lanza and Lanza.
That's confidential, I didn't hear that.
It's distributed by the borough, I don't believe it's confidential, I have it at home, unless I have my numbers wrong. In any case, there is a very, and I'm not answering you, Mrs. McFarrow. There is, there is Lanza and Lanza, excuse me, Lanza and Lanza's first invoice, which I received, undoctored, unredacted, was clearly a co, a conference with the mayor and Mrs. McMorro regarding internal affairs, and that was dated...
Actually, we're not.
And that was dated...
No, that's not true.
July 24th.
Order, Mayor.
That was dated, that Oprah...
Residents lying.
That Oprah is dated July 24th, that bill, rather, is dated July 24th, 2016. So, that's what the bill is for, it almost totals $7,000, and the only item on that bill are internal affairs. Number, and my final comment...
You know what?
And my final comment...
McFarrow, with all due respect, you cannot call out from there, okay?
All right, everybody, everybody, hi-hat, everybody.
You know what?
There's children present.
Don't stop, we're making a motion to have you...
Please, stop.
Okay.
That's the woman, oh, please, that's indecorous.
Excuse me, excuse me, you're supposed to maintain order.
I am...
Order doesn't mean that people in the audience are going to interrupt me with their lies or their views of what transpired. Now, you can check the records, very, I have three Opas for the same item, the first item has the bills unredacted, the second bill eliminates Ms. McMorro's name from it, and yours, and the third copy eliminates internal affairs. So, you tell me, who's hiding what?
Yeah, what stinks there?
Uh, anybody else wishing to be heard? Uh, I can't have you come up, everybody's already, you spoke already. Yes.
I think he's getting nervous.
Okay, stop.
Don't let him say it's a liar.
Okay, please, the public, um, can't, it doesn't matter.
She can't call him out.
Ready?
Adonis Morfes, 26 Charles Street, Englewood Cliff. Mr. Mayor, I hear you constantly attacking Mr. Wunsch, and everybody about attorneys and whatnot. If my memory serves me correctly, when you hired the attorney, that was our attorney for two years, that was the first time in my life that I saw an attorney bid a Dutch, Dutch auction for her salary, right up on that stand there. And every case, eighty percent...
That, that's not a Dutch auction, by the way.
That's a Dutch auction, she went backwards, she went down.
No, that's not a Dutch auction.
Yes, they started up, and she went down, that's a Dutch auction.
Interrupting the resident again, he wouldn't speak.
Anyway, leaving that aside, leaving that aside, leaving that aside, every case, practically, eighty percent, that she brought, or started, we lost.
She didn't start any cases, she defended cases.
Well, she recommended you to start the cases and start the lawsuits, and we lost.
No, we didn't.
Well, you didn't lose every case in front of a judge.
No, but go ahead.
I, I, I seen you, every case that you went in front of a judge, we lost.
You're misstating the facts.
I'm mistaking the fact?
You are, you are.
What form of cases?
Is that, is there...
I don't think, I don't think I'm mistaking the fact.
You are, actually. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
The last three times you were there, I don't think you won.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public?
One second.
One favor?
All right.
Okay, um, I just want to also mention that, since I didn't approve this agenda, uh, and I clearly didn't approve the next item, but it was in the public notice that, um, apparently, uh, the Democrats on council with their attorney took the Robert Mueller clown card to the council today to censure me, um, so I, I look forward to hearing it. Uh, we have northjersey.com, I'm sure the article's already been written here, Katie, if you want, you sit down here, you can write the article with them, I brought a crayon for, uh, you and northjersey.com. Uh, and so let's, let's, uh, if, if you want to do it, go ahead, folks. Be careful what you wish for, though.
I, I made a motion to censure the mayor for his, uh, actions in closed session the other night.
Okay, so don't, let me tell you what those actions were. Um, I was sitting in closed session, and, um, Borough Attorney Wunsch got out of his chair, and was standing over me, threatening me, and I said, "I will, I will, I will defend myself," and Officer Craples came in and saw you standing there, and I said, "Officer Craples, are you seeing what I'm seeing?" So, I'm sitting there, and Mr. Wunsch is standing on top of me, and I will defend myself. So, if you want to sanction me for that, go, go right ahead, do whichever you...
You're gonna punch him in the face.
No, it's self-defense, okay?
No, you said, "I'm going to punch you in the face."
Well, look, you know what, if, if Al Wunsch is standing over you, you will defend yourself, unless, and, and he also offered to go out and fight in the street, and, and I said, "Not right now, Al," because I, I don't want you not to be able to walk away from here.
You would like to bare-knuckle fight him, is that...
You actually offered him to go out in the street.
Well, he, he wanted to do stuff. So, you, you actually want to do this?
Yeah.
You want to do this? Look at yourself, Gloria, is this your campaign kickoff? Go ahead, do it, do it, because I, I have something to say after this, but go ahead.
In addition to, we've, I've sent you numerous emails, asking you to stop putting your attorneys, your partners, and your law firm on every email that goes out...
I'm alone over here, I need defense, okay? You guys are just ganging up on me.
And then you talk about closed session minutes.
Are you okay? Are you okay?
Really? This is what he did, this is what he does to me in closed session, he won't allow me to talk, and then when I get upset, he goes, "Are you stuttering now?", basically, so this is, this is what we're, we're talking about, right?
Well, look, you know...
So, he keeps adding, he keeps adding your partner to every...
We're all very childish, and I think we should just turn the meeting over to the two children that are here, because they could do a better job.
All right, are you done? Because it's true, I have emails, he puts them...
They're also better dressed.
Okay, he puts them on every email, he discusses what's at closed session with his partners in his law practice. Am I wrong? Should I send the emails out to show everybody what you've been doing and opening the, the door into our building?
You guys are ganging up on me, and, and you're all very cooperative, you've been doing a lot of bad things, and we'll get to that.
All right, I'm gonna show everybody.
I will defend myself, and, and that's in, in my best interest.
Now, you didn't disclose that you hired your, uh, other firm that you work with and do business with, Troutner's firm?
I don't work...
That your, your partners used to work there for seven years before coming to your firm.
They did, because we needed to go into the...
That's right, you never even once mentioned that, and now there's a $400,000 bill from their office.
Yeah, $400,000 in the last...
Well, that's because in 42 years, we don't have any affordable housing, and I'm fixing that problem. Okay, so, uh, what, what is exactly your censure, Mr. Aversa, or Dr. Aversa, what do you want to be called today? What is that?
What is it?
Yeah.
It's a rap, man.
Oh, okay, well, good. You guys want to have a vote?
It's nothing more than that, Mary.
You want to have a vote?
I second it. I second it.
No, different rules, no, 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 different rules for Democrats, different rules.
Now that you're, are you talking to me, Carol? You...
All right, order. No calling out to the public, please.
Do not ever talk about my children.
Really?
Okay, all right, let, let's move on, I, I, we have a lot of appointments to make, and I'm actually welcome in some appointments.
Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
I, I think what we're trying to establish here is that, you know, it's very uncomfortable in closed session when you're threatening professionals, when you're...
I was threatened by Al Wunsch, and you sat there, and you pretended it didn't happen.
Well, he did not threaten you.
Yeah, he did, he was standing, was he standing on top of me, yes or no?
You went and started the conversation.
Was he standing on top of me, yes or no?
You stood up, and then you...
And I was sitting down, was I sitting down?
You sat down, and he was still standing.
He was standing...
But you said to him, "I'm gonna punch you in the face." Now, Mayor, the whole thing is, is I'm going to...
Listen, I will defend myself, okay? And if somebody physically challenges me, I will do that.
It's not the first time...
Okay, I have the right to do that, and you could ask Officer Craples, because he saw the whole thing.
Mayor, screaming, screaming is not going, just let me hear what I have to say here, okay?
It's turning into gobbledygook, she has the...
No, it, it's actually not.
It's gobbledygook.
It's very uncomfortable to be in there and listen to you harass the professionals. Al Wunsch, you threatened to punch him, you asked him...
No, no, you're, you're, don't change the narrative, no, 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 you're changing the narrative, this is what you all do. I have, I have the right to self-defense, I have the right to self-defense.
It's a conversation, you can answer me.
My reward.
Why wasn't this...
Well, you know what, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to record closed session from now on, maybe that will get you to behave.
Closed session should be recorded.
We should record closed sessions from now on. If it's not happening, I'd like to see it happen.
Well, I don't think you can do it by law, but anyway.
That's what you're talking about.
You can use it, but you can record.
A second, let's take a vote, and move forward, please.
Councilperson's blue?
No.
Song? Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, it's, it's been said, it's been said, the censure of those who are opposed to us is the highest, the highest commendation that can be given to us. So, it is indeed with a badge of honor that I received the opprobrium of this corrupt Democratic Council. And I dispense with it, and I dispense with it with the following proclamation of condemnation dated March 5th, 2019. Whereas, having been duly sworn in as Borough Council President on January 3rd, 2019, Gloria O., together with the Democratic Council members Edward Aversa, Ellen Park-
That's the agenda.
No, 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 it's a continuation. Do not call out.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So here, let me finish. Let me finish. No, 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 you can say whatever you want after.
Ask you for point of order.
Edward Aversa, I was in the middle on my statement. Officer, please get the call of the meeting. Ellen Park, Deborah Sabari, and Jimmy Song embarked on a treacherous path to reward, to reward certain wrongdoers, who not surprisingly are also their political backers, and to punish the good citizens of Englewood Cliffs. To wit, to wit, on January 3rd, 2019, Council members O. Aversa, E. Park, Sabari, and Song won dismissed the disciplinary charges pending against former Police Chief Michael Choffey relating to certain surreptitious recordings made by Choffey confirming his and other borough employees' participation in racist, sexually harassing, sexually explicit, fraudulent overtime. Officer, you have to stop them.
You're going off the agenda now.
Death threats and politically targeting discussion. Such dismissals, such dismissals were claimed all without hearing any public testimony. They had no public testimony. Therefore, they are prejudicing the rights of every citizen, resident and employee of Englewood Cliffs. It properly settled the litigation involving moral road and the negligent engineering, the Boswell Engineering, which has for over ten years resulted in flooding the rural road neighborhood residents' homes.
You're using that argument for political reasons.
It started the affordable housing plan developed by the 2018 Borough Council for fifty-seven units, built in favor of a developer order that had demanded over six hundred units to be built. They deprived the mayor of the statutory right-
Affordable housing while it's still in-
They deprived the mayor of the statutory right.
You asked us to stop-
Lawfully terminated the borough administrator and borough attorney. And, and they violated the open vote mechanism.
That's your opinion.
As ever, now therefore being proclaimed by the mayor of Englewood Cliffs that for the foregoing reasons, Council members O. Aversa, E. Park, Sabari, and Song be and hereby are admonished, denounced, censured, and reprimanded on the 5th day of March, 2019. May they, may they now see the fault and folly in their ways, and may they reform their ways, and may they now begin finally, finally abide by the oath of their office.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, I'll put them popcorns for next week. Popcorn for your residents.
You know, you may think it's funny, folks, but it's actually-
It's a joke.
Our democracy is suffering here, okay?
No.
That's right.
And I apologize, and I apologize that I had to raise my voice to proclaim that. However, as you see the council, they don't even want to hear from us, okay? They don't want to hear from you, residents.
We don't want to hear your lives, Mayor. We don't want to hear-
Oh. You didn't dismiss the charges against Chief Choffey? You didn't set up the law?
Everybody knows that.
Come here, guys. You're going in here. You're going in here.
Move forward with the meeting.
Okay, so, whoa, 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 whoa. Relax, relax.
Is that not true?
Come on.
That's also right.
Let's do the resolutions next, okay? Let's have some appointments so we can get some professionals involved here.
About time. Since we blocked it too much, we'd like to move forward.
Well, you didn't do it the right way, so it got blocked.
We didn't do it the Caesar's way.
It is embarrassing. This is all-
Well, I have the right to veto, and I have the right to proclaim, and I just did both. All right, so let's get some business done. It's a Tuesday night. It's a long week ahead. Adonis Morfes, there's no calling out. Okay. So Resolution 2019-01.
Excuse me, you skipped one.
Yeah, I'm skipping that one.
No, you're not.
No, you can skip it.
No, I'm not reading that one, so somebody else can read it.
Which one?
Resolution 19-77.
Oh, yes. You do it.
So, Resolution 19-77. Want me to read the whole resolution?
No, just the heading.
No, read the whole thing, the Councilman Aversa.
Resolution 19-77, by title, resolution or pro, the referral of disciplinary charges against borough clerk Luke Zedeppe. Motion?
Here's the thing, folks. I believe that because no matter what they do today, I'm speaking, no matter what they do tonight, I'm speaking. No matter what they do, I was speaking before the motion. No matter what they do tonight, the facts don't change. The facts don't change.
He's the mayor. My God, what is wrong with you people? He's not lying.
No, because I was speaking before the mo, I was speaking before the second. I was speaking.
Nope.
So, folks, no matter what they do today, you know, the position of clerk is very important. It's supposed to be an impartial, nonpartisan position. What you just heard was partisanship on that tape.
Right.
Okay? So no matter what they do, my job is to be mayor, okay? That's my job. And I'm a Republican. The clerk is supposed to be neutral, okay? The clerk, the clerk is in charge of our elections, okay? I believe she's not capable of running a fair election, and I believe she's partisan. That's my rule, okay?
Actually, point of order?
Well, you've discussed her work before.
Yeah, he's not-
She was riced. She confirmed it right.
No, excuse me. Point of order.
She confirmed it right.
First of all, Mayor, I was not riced for, excuse me, I'm speaking now.
No.
Okay? I have a right to speak, number one.
Because you told me you were riced.
I was riced at the last meeting.
You told me today.
No, I did not.
Don't play games. Look, the bottom line-
Mayor, point of order.
The clerk is-
Mayor, point of order.
The clerk is partisan.
Okay, let's just vote. Point of order. No, I'd, no, I'd like to clarify something because there's a-
Why do you tell me?
Play them. I do. Mayor?
Take the vote.
Mayor, point of order.
Take the vote.
Number one, I was not riced for this meeting.
You told me you were. That's why I asked you today.
No, I was riced for the February 13 meeting, and these items were discussed in closed session. Number two, I do not run the elections.
You administered this. No, there's, the way the elections are run-
No, there's a county superintendent in charge of elections. I oversee-
There's a board of elections, a superintendent of elections-
Incorrect.
And a county clerk.
I don't-
Under statute, those are the three peoples who administer the election through the municipal clerk.
I'm responsible for the voters.
So you're saying that you don't have to be impartial?
Mayor, I don't run the elections.
There's a motion and a second. The vote needs to be taken.
Listen, I'm delivering the democracy to you. If you want it, take it. If you don't, that's fine, but that's it.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion? Mary, I don't want it. Who made the motion? Edward Aversa? All right, get the motion on the floor. Who made? Who seconded it?
I did.
Take a vote.
Counselperson Wu?
In terms of this resolution, I'm really surprised to hear that all charges are dismissed with no hearing again. Our borough clerk recorded minutes on October 10. It clearly did not reflect what happened at the council meeting. I'm sure all you guys watched that videotape. The chief, at the end of the day, recorded countless hours of audiotape, and everyone went ahead and dismissed, tried to dismiss those charges in a vote that never took place. You know, I'm very disappointed in this. My vote is no.
Counselperson Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Okay, we were recommended by the Labor Council, yes, here it goes, that he recommended that we drop the charges for various reasons. So because of that, I am voting to drop the charges.
Aversa? I'm sorry, Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, another loss for democracy. Let's move on. By the way, I brought copies of my proclamation, since I figured that you're going to be able to hear me, and I just brought them. I will hand them out later.
Point of order?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we appoint the court professional-
The who?
The court professional, the judge, public defender, and the-
Sure, go ahead. They're all on the agenda.
No, I understand that. Can we do that first?
Oh, you want to go out of order? Yeah, it's fine. I don't care.
Okay, so we are going to jump to Resolution 12, 13, and 15.
I make a motion to appoint Judge Mark Saperstein.
Second?
Gloria, do you work with them in any other town?
I'm sure you did the homework, right?
No, I actually don't.
I don't think I'll have a second to do that. I definitely do not.
No, but you, but you have other conflicts.
First.
Take a vote. Yeah, you can take a vote.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Do you want to, do you have a Bible?
Yes, I do.
Folks, just so you know, this is Judge Walter Stribb. He's a judge in the Superior Court in Hackensack, and he's a former prosecutor of this court in Englewood Cliffs. He went from being prosecutor here to being a Superior Court judge. This system here has had three judges. Zaven went to the OAL, Stribb went to the Superior Court, and Bonnie Missdal is the assignment judge of Bergen County. So this has been a very, very prestigious place to serve as either prosecutor, public defender, or municipal court judge. And we're honored to have him here tonight. Let's thank him for being here.
Thank you for permitting me to administer this oath to the municipal judge, Mark Saperstein. So I'm going to administer the oath of allegiance at this particular time. Please repeat after me. I, Mark Saperstein-
I, Mark Saperstein.
Genuinely swear-
Genuinely swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey-
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state.
And to the governments established in the United States-
And the developments established in the United States-
And the state.
And the state.
Under the authority of the people-
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully-
I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly-
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of municipal judge of the borough of Englewood Cliffs.
And perform all the duties of the municipal judge of the borough of Englewood Cliffs.
According to the best of my abilities-
According to my best of my abilities.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much in the community, the council, the mayor, and everyone for reappointing me. I don't know if you know this, but I've been your prosecutor and your former municipal court judge for fifteen years. I served in fairness, I respect, and the rule of law always ruled here. And I look forward to my reappointment, and I thank everybody in the community that has come out tonight, and thank anybody on the council, no matter what political side you're on, because I've been appointed through all those administrations. Thank you very much.
I do.
Okay, who do you want to do next?
Make a motion to appoint Mark Ramondo, Esquire, to prosecutor.
So Mark, been our existing prosecutor, he's had a good job.
He's a registered Republican.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Once the election's over, you should just work. That's it.
Second?
I did, second.
Does he get sworn in?
Yes. And the public defender gets sworn in.
Do you want to come up, Mark?
I have a picky eye.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Second book. Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Hey, your voice back.
I did. I'm maturing now.
Where's Mark? Where's Mark? Maybe.
It's a M-A-R-C, just like this one. Might take your coat off.
I was gonna say the same thing. You need a heartbeat leash?
I haven't, you know, I wouldn't blame you if it worked.
You want me to do it? I'll do it. No, walk it, walk it.
You have a limit?
Here you go.
Mark, how long have you been?
So, perhaps you can see him? Forty-four years?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, how long have you been a prosecutor?
I'm a prosecutor.
That's pretty funny, actually.
Prosecutor Ramondo took over for me and then became the judge of the Superior Court. So he's my direct successor.
What about the next one, Superior Court?
Me. A little levity, ladies and gentlemen, it's not a bad thing.
What's your name? The, the, damn. Right. Yeah, left hand, I remember the minister.
No.
I'm a lefty.
Okay, please repeat after me. I, Mark D. Ramondo.
I, Mark D. Ramondo.
Genuinely swear-
Genuinely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same-
So the crowd can see him. Wait for you.
Oh, yeah. Actually, how long have you been a prosecutor? Just a little more prosecutor. That's pretty funny, actually.
Prosecutor Ramondo took over for me, and then became the judge of the Superior Court. So he's my direct successor.
Who's the next one in the Superior Court?
Me. A little levity, ladies and gentlemen, not a bad thing. Damn. Yeah, left hand, I'm going to administer the.
I'm a lefty.
Okay, uh, please repeat after me, I, Mark D. Ramondo.
I, Mark D. Ramondo.
I solemnly swear.
Please.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And bear truthfully allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And the state.
And the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of municipal prosecutor.
The office of municipal prosecutor.
Of the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
The borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations.
Judges having a very long day today.
I make a motion to appoint Jill Kadrig for a public defender.
Second.
You take the vote.
Councilperson Zou?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Do you want to come up, Walter? You want to come up, and then you.
We'll hold it together.
To administer the oath of allegiance on this time, please repeat after me, I, Jill Kadrig.
I, Jill Kadrig.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And the state.
And the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of public defender.
Of public defender.
Of the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
Of the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congrats.
Thanks, Jeff.
Are we going back to the one?
No, yes.
Do you have a Bible? Mr. Saban? Mr. Saban? I just wanted to tell you, Mr. Saban, we're using your Bible.
So we're going back to, back to order?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you.
All right, so do you want to just go back to the top?
Go back.
All right, so, um.
Motion for borough attorney?
Uh-huh, please, hold on.
Yes, go ahead.
Joe Marinella?
I'm moved.
You have a vote?
Councilperson Zou?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Recue?
Reason.
Do we, I have an oath of office.
You need to tell her reason for the case.
I do not.
You still squat him in?
Sorry? Is he here? Oh, yeah, hi.
I'll, I'll for you.
Sure. You want it before you want to?
I'll try it. Sure.
Repeat after me.
Yes.
I, Joseph R. Marinella.
I, Joseph R. Marinella.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And the state.
And the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And partially.
Partially.
And justly.
Perform. And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of attorney of the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
All the duties of the office of attorney of the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. He's gone already?
After you. All right, um, what's next, that?
Uh, next item is, um, who's our bond counsel?
Oh, uh.
Number two.
Number two?
That's bond counsel.
Make a motion to appoint William Mayor from Dakotas?
I'm moved.
Second.
William.
Uh, what's the Dakotas, uh, full name of the firm, do you have that?
Uh, I have to look it up.
All right, never mind, we'll get that.
I'm sure the clerk could, uh, get it from the RFQ.
Is he here, or?
I don't, I don't really.
It's Dakotas, it's Patrick Cole, Giblin, LLP.
Okay, I know this one. Is it seconded?
Yes.
All right, let's have a vote, okay.
Councilperson Zou?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, next up is auditor. It's resolution two thousand nineteen zero-three.
Make a motion to appoint Steve Wilcock.
Second.
Councilperson Zou?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Number four, engineer?
Make a motion to appoint Neglia Engineering.
Second.
Councilperson Zou?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Number five, municipal planner?
Um, point of order, Mayor? Um, I, I'd like to skip this one, because, um, we need to go out for RFQ.
Okay.
All right, well, uh, we'll do, do you need a motion to go out to RFQ? Want to do that now?
Sure.
So, yeah.
I make that motion.
Second.
Second. All favor, going out for RFQ, can we do it that way?
Aye.
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 All right, so can you go out for an RFQ on that thing?
Absolutely. Okay, next one, number six, is real estate tax appraiser?
Make a motion to appoint McNerdy and Associates.
Second.
Councilperson Zou?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Financial advisor?
That's us, seven.
Number seven.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to remove this, I don't think at this point, at this time, we need to appoint a financial advisor.
I thought we just put it out for RFQ.
That was municipal.
No, we, we have, the financial advisor went out for RFQ, but I don't think we need to appoint somebody at this moment.
I'd like to defer that to the borough attorney, to, um, ask him if we need to appoint a financial advisor at this point or not.
I just got here. Or Kevin.
We won't get it.
You don't have to do it today.
If you want, you could, you could do it next week at the regular meeting. You want to take a look at that, counsel?
Sure.
I think it was in twenty fifteen, we did need a financial advisor for something that the state required all municipalities to do, um, and then every year, we just went out for RFQ for, but it's not a necessity at this time.
Typically, the financial advisor is not a salaried or a monthly paid individual. They're only brought in when you need them, and the schedule that's attached to their contract usually just is for an as-needed basis. But certainly, you can look at it after tonight's meeting, you don't have to appoint tonight.
Can, can you just determine for next week if it's a requirement?
It's not a requirement.
Okay, she just said that.
No, it isn't. No, I said in twenty fifteen, it was a requirement for that year to have a financial advisor. But it's, it's only something that the state had mandated that year.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, zero-nine, uh, labor attorney?
Uh, make a motion to appoint Mike Broderman.
Second.
Councilperson Zou?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Ten, special litigation counsel?
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Breslin and Breslin, Sobelhan LLP, and Alba Wontz.
Who was the second one?
Sobel, it's S-O-B-E-L-H-A-N, two words.
Second.
Okay, so I think that, just for the record for the public, I think Breslin and Breslin have a conflict with this town, and I think Al Wontz has a conflict with this town as well, but do it, you know, follow the procedures.
Second.
Uh, councilperson Zou?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Number eleven, tax appeal?
It says tax appeal attorney.
Tax appeal attorney at the.
Make a motion for the Troy Law Group?
Second.
Can you spell that?
Troy, C-O-Y.
You have a vote?
Uh, yes, that was Park and Aversa. Councilperson Zou?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.